Before, everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, quick roll call. Um, here, no jurors here, trustee LeBeever, trustee Crawford, trustee Smith, and trustee, um, Wolf, they're all present. Uh, DPW superintendent. Wolf is here as well, so is treasurer Sett, clerk Laquet. Only two that are absent would be CEO Bracker and attorney Fritz. All right, uh, go forward with the approval of the minutes. Uh, for January eleventh, regular board meeting in January twenty fifth. Budget work session. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, carried and approved.
Was that word? Was word for the second? Okay.
Yes. Move on to public comment. Uh, Mr. Pritchard, you are up.
Um, I just wanted to ask about the soccer reimbursement. Watching the February meeting, it appeared to me that you, um, basically told the soccer group that you don't have the money that was budgeted for them. Um, is that, is that right? Am I, are you not?
It was budgeted in the youth account.
Yeah.
And due to, the gas came in extremely higher than what was budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
We're still waiting on reimbursement through the state. And that will be paid out to basic, and it won't be probably anything left to pay into the youth.
I guess I, I, I guess regardless, I, I think it's wrong to tell the youth program that, yep, you can count on us for five hundred dollars. And then, one day, they come to get the five hundred dollars and tell them, sorry, we can't have it. The other group overspent. You know, that's, that's just, there's two hundred kids in that program. There's, there's twice as many kids in that program as there is in the swim program, and it goes year round. They don't ask for a lot of money. And, you know, I don't know what, what, what ended up being the contributions from Otto, New Albion, and the village. Um, they were budgeted for three thousand dollars, at least the, the last budget I saw. I just think you should find a way to make that right, because that program, I mean, they're practicing tonight, they practice every week of it. Almost every night of the week with different age groups. Saturday, they play all day long. I think for five hundred dollars out of a four hundred thousand dollar budget, even if the village has to come up with it themselves out of their forty thousand dollar contingency budget, I think you should try to make a way to get them their money.
Well, I mean, we are working on the, we are working on getting them taken care of for next year. As far as I know, when she was here, she didn't make a, a, you know, that was detrimental that they receive it. At least that's not an impression they received from her when she came in, and hoping that for next year's budget that, for sure that it's there, so.
I talked to Myrna, who runs it, runs it, Myrna Reynolds from Little Valley. Like I said, they have a budget just like we have a budget. They make their budget based on the contributions they've asked for, and they were told, the library asked for their contributions, we give them that. The youth group, I'm sorry, the, the Department of Aging asked for theirs. Senior citizens, we give it to them. You know, you got a soccer program that's asking for the five hundred dollars, we told them we'd give it to them. And comes time to give it, and you tell them, no, I, I just, I don't think that's right. Especially when you have a forty thousand dollar contingency fund that, uh, was intended for those kind of things. And I know that's not part of the youth program, but, you know, you could always go back to Otto and New Albion and say, hey, the, the, the gas came in significantly higher, I'm not sure why it came in so high, you're running one less day a week, but. And say, hey, we still need to get the five hundred dollars to the soccer club, and we need a hundred and fifty dollars each or something, I don't know. But I think you should try to make a way to come through with the money and support the, support the program.
Eric.
Yep.
Your, your concerns are, are well seated, and, uh, and we agree with you that that should be, uh, a program that we have, keep in place, and that we found. So, we have looked at, at several different ways. We think that we have a very good answer that will fund it, and give them what they asked for, okay? And, uh, and I'm sure you'll support, support it. We believe that that's an excellent program for the kids, and it should be done. So, that will be taken care of.
That's the first, that's the first that you've said that, so.
Uh, well, well, one, there was a meeting, and then there was another meeting, and, uh, on the second meeting, we came up with a very good answer.
Okay.
Because there are some very good programs out there that we need to support, like the library, like the, um, the Historical Society, and the Senior Citizen Building, and such. So, we believe that we found a very good answer that works, and, uh, and takes care of the community the way it should. So, we, we understand your, your, your concern. It is a very genuine concern by all of us, and we're going to address it and take care of it properly.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question.
Mr. Eliana.
We're up.
We're up.
All right, I just, uh, I've been covered every month. I'm gonna give you guys an update on the water project. Put together my, my outline. Um, so, Phase One of the water project, um, as I updated you last time, the village concluded their NEPA review, and I know that Dan got an email, um, that there's a webinar, uh, that, that OCR is requiring our community to attend, that's about NEPA reviews. We looked into it, and I don't believe the village has to attend, but, but I'm gonna personally be listening to the webinar, so we, we have that covered. It's just Dan knew, and we'd emailed him, came to make him aware of that. But, you know, the NEPA review on this project at this point is closed unless something, you know, came to our attention where there was an environmental issue that wasn't found, which everyone, everyone's immediate, you know, straightforward. So, NEPA review is, as we said last time, is closed, but we're gonna listen to that webinar just to make sure that funding agencies happen. Uh, the water grants, um, went over that quite a bit last month. Um, the village was, was offered an award in December, and, um, last month, you guys voted to move forward with it, and we, our office worked with the village and with Municipal Solutions, and Municipal Solutions submitted the form that was required by the January twelfth deadline, so that went in. So, EFC responded to the village on February second with what's called a missing items letter. So, the, the next step that happens with, um, with that funding agency is that they close up short-term financing, is what it's called, which is the financing that allows you to build the, the project over two years, and it converts into the long term, if they include construction, unless they know, um, you know, the exact figure that gets spent. If you don't spend, you know, if the product doesn't cost as much as, as our budget shows, then you're not gonna finance long term any more than it actually costs. And so, the short-term financing is based on a letter saying, this is what we need, that's one to fourteen, in order to facilitate that. Then they said that it needed to be in by February nineteenth. Um, and I know Dan got ahold of us, and they, you know, asked us, is there anything that we need from the village? I, uh, spent quite a bit of time going back and forth with Mary Chapel about it, and, um, many of the items on the list are, they're frankly items that you wouldn't have at this point. The items one through seven, I mean, the plans and specifications, health department approval of the plans, engineer certification tech requirement, these are all things, that's at the end of design. We didn't even start designing Phase Two, because you just got awarded the money. You just had the last board meeting, voted to accept that money. So, you know, that's, the funding agency would, um, you know, they're well aware of that too. They know where we are in the schedule, because we submitted them, the schedule showing where we are. But anyhow, we're, we're working with Mary Chapel. Um, there's some of these items that she can get them right away, and there's some of these items that we're gonna be actively working on over the next month. But, um, the village will be copied on all our correspondence with them, but we'll make sure that EFC knows where we stand and what we're getting them. According to Mary, they don't actually need all these items in order to close on short-term financing. That's what this letter says, but they'll, they'll just make it a condition when they close, you do, you do have to get these to us eventually. The big item that, that we're working on is item number thirteen, MWBE utilization plan. When we, as a, as a consultant contract with the village, well, basically, let me put it this way. On, on the funds that the village has offered through EFC, the New York State Water Grants Program, EFC, um, requires a, a goal of utilizing or attempting to utilize minority or women-owned businesses for twenty-six percent of the dollar value of the project. So, that plays out in different ways. When, when we as an engineer consult with the village, that applies, and so we have to, um, we have to try to make sure that, um, you know, any opportunities there are for subcontracting, that we show good faith effort of trying to engage minority and, um, women-owned businesses. And then, when there's construction contracts that are left, you know, when you go to let the Phase Two contracts for building a pipeline from Kelly Summit into the village, those contractors will have, um, those same requirements that they, when they, if they're subcontracting things, they have to show good faith efforts. There's a whole bid packet that the funding agency issues, and this is all standard stuff that all these contractors are used to dealing with, when they're being funded through these types of programs. But we, right now, are, are working on that, like, we identify things like the survey, um, geotechnical borings, environmental, uh, like wetland delineation along the route. These are all things that we would subcontract to, to a consultant in those areas, and so we will take those opportunities and post them. There's a state website we post them, and can try to get utilization. So, putting that whole plan together, though, takes, you know, you have to advertise for several weeks and get responses back, and so there's no way that they can expect that by February nineteenth, when they send us the letter last week.
Okay.
So, our response to them will be, yeah, we're actively working on getting that plan together. So, we'll keep you guys in the loop on all of that.
Do you know if, like, an ETA for DAMFONE has been done?
Uh, the MWBE utilization, I, all these items here, some of these fifteen items won't be done for quite a while.
Right, 'cause we're not here to remember.
Obviously, design, um, is, is quite a bit out there on Phase Two, but the MWBE utilization plan, um, it, it could potentially be a back and forth with them.
Okay.
Our, our total contract, um, with the village, I believe, is four hundred and ninety thousand.
Yep.
And so, it, and it's funded, uh, Phase One is CDBG and Phase Two is through EFC, the New York State Water Grants Program, but, um, some of the regulations cross over the lines of who's paying for it. And so, they look at our total contract with the village, four hundred and ninety thousand, and they say, we have to show, we have to come up with a plan that shows that we tried to subcontract twenty-six percent of that. Well, there's not really twenty-six percent that we typically would subcontract. And so, we have to typically go through a process of soliciting participation.
Okay.
And then, if we can't get enough participation, we have to go through a process of requesting a waiver, um, of those goals, the, the remaining portion of the goals, you know, if we only get sixteen percent instead of twenty-six percent utilization. So, it, it's probably a month to a month and a half before that all wraps up with, uh, getting an approved plan from the utilization, or from the MWBE office at EFC. There's a, I believe on page two of the letter, it says our, um, MWBE CEO contacts Lisa McCullough. We've worked with Lisa on many jobs in the past, we've worked with her all time. And so, she's the one that would be reviewing our submitals, and, um, and if there's an approval, if there's a waiver request approving whether. So, I, I would say probably a month. So, that's, that's my update on that missing items letter, just so that the board's aware that we are working on that. Municipal Solutions sent an email this afternoon, so I don't know. We haven't yet, it was copied to Gene, because the funding agency for some reason copied Gene on the first email chain, so. But they, uh, Mary's working on it. So, that's kind of, as far as Phase Two, that's where it stands, is where we're, we get this stuff together. Once we, um, get to a point with short, basically where what it comes down to is if we started working on design, we, you know, we hire a surveyor, they go out, start working, you know, early phases of getting design ready. If we start submitting bills to you, the village, um, isn't gonna have access, they have them closed on the short-term financing, so you're not gonna have access, basically. And the short-term financing is like a, kind of like a line of credit for the year while you're doing construction. Mary can explain that a lot better than I can, um, but, but basically, the typical routine is you would get a bill, whether it be from us or a contractor related to the project, and the board would make decisions about approving it or rejecting it. And then, it would get submitted to, to Municipal Solutions, and they would fill out the paperwork and submit it to EFC and say, here's our request for a disbursement. And then, when that money gets wired over the village, then you can write checks to pay the contractor or consultant. And until short-term financing is in place, you don't really have, you know, you know, Mary can talk to you about what the options are, but, so, um, you know, if, if it's decided that we need to run with this before you get short-term financing, then Mary can talk to you about options, she can work with Gene on how you do that. But the bottom line is, first things first, we need to get the path to short-term financing moving forward with Mary, so that, that can free up the money to start designing the project and ultimately going again and building.
Okay.
Black Marwell, there's no updates on that from EFC at this point, and, um, John, um, everything is still mothballed there, so it's same status as last month. If there was an issue, it would take several days to a week to probably have that plant up and usable at all, even in the state of San Francisco, so, just to keep you guys in the loop. Kelly Summit, real elation, we had market trees with John, did you guys get a chance to get any more of them done?
We did that, yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, where that, just where that stands as a, as a big picture is that, um, the tree clearing has to be concluded by March thirty-first, absolute deadline that, that's part of the environmental permit for fish and wildlife. And so, we have to keep that in mind, and John's aware of that. But, you know, we should aim for the beginning of March if we can, just leave ourselves a room so we're not up against the deadline. But, um, then actual work up there on, on digging in the springs is not something that you do first thing in the spring when it's wet. That's gonna be pushed, you know, that's further into the dry part of the summer. But this tree clearing has to be done by March thirty-first.
Okay.
So, just to be clear.
They just have to be done.
That's my understanding, the trees just have to be cut. Um, you may not be totally done.
How many trees do we cut?
Ten or twelve. Yeah, and some minor ones too, they're, yeah. It's not that much, it's not that much. It's not gonna be cut the hime up there, but it's just that it's a difficult site to access up on the hill there, and it's, and at least Mike can see what you're up against. The meter contracts, where that stands is, we met with one last meter after they contacted us at the end of, well, a couple of weeks ago. We met with them, uh, a week and a half ago, and I have, you can't wait.
You can. Yep.
And there are another meter company that, when we write this spec, like the funding agency request, there is requiring that it's not written tightly around one branded meter. They said, they said they won't let us sole source, um, procure water meters. And so, what we've prepared is a spec that, that we, you know, we've compared all the features of these five, five main companies that are on the market, and, and worked with John and, um, as far as what are some features that they thought were the most important out of all those. And, and so, the spec we've prepared really, um, it, it makes sure that at least three, three companies can, can meet the spec. But it tries to focus on what these guys have felt was important, you know, the, the drive-by reading system, um, for, is just an example, but, you know, the, the meter companies can store a lot of data, like, store ninety days' worth of hourly, um, consumption on, on these meters. So that way, if someone has a question about their water bill, you know, they said, well, you know, I didn't have a leak, and you can download an hour, you know, download ninety days of hourly data and say, actually, you know, in the middle of last month, I don't know what you had going on, but these couple of days, you had continual water usage, you know, all hours of the night and everything. And so, it can help with, um, looking at stuff like that, or looking at someone's water service froze, that they had no use for a couple of days. Some of the meter companies, you have to actually access the meter to download that, you have to go down and, and get it out of the meter, whereas other ones, you can write in your truck with the drive-by system, you can two-way communicate with it, and get, get that without having to enter the house. And, um, that, that seems like a really useful feature, you don't have to set up meetings to be able to get into the house. So, um, things like that, we'll work through in the spec.
When you know we're gonna be ready to bid for the meters?
I'm, I'm hoping that I can give you, you guys have a, another meeting this month, right?
Yes.
Hoping that I can give you an update in time for that meeting, so that you could schedule, um, 'cause you have to, you have to schedule and then advertise for a bid opening date. But I have to get, um, a few more details into the spec and to get it approved by the funding agency to go to bid. So, I'm hoping that by, by that, that second meeting this month, we can, have you guys schedule a bid opening. For that, you know, a bid opening, um, a job like this, it's ideally, we have three weeks from when it's advertised until we have a bid opening. And we usually try to schedule a bid opening, um. I like to, if you guys have board meetings on Mondays, I like to schedule a bid opening on Thursday, the week before, something like that, let's say the week before. That maybe we have time to review bids, and then what we do is write a letter to the board, giving them, um, a summary of what the bid opening had, and, and a recommend, what we call a recommendation to a ward, so we type, these are bids, and these are ones that were responsive or weren't responsive bidders. This is who we recommend, and then you guys can review it all and make your decisions from there at that board meeting.
So, when do you think, so are you hoping to have, what, all the specs and everything set for the next meeting, is that?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, I'd like to at least have it, I, I don't know if I'll purr back from the health department, but I have an end of them and get an idea from them when they'll be approving it, and then we can schedule a bid opening, you know, a month out from that, or whatever it is. We'll look at the dates, and I'll tell you, I'll recommend to you what we schedule per day.
Okay.
But.
So, probably you'll.
Yeah, you'll, you'll have two, you'll have two board meetings in March as well.
Yeah.
It's, it's possible to, like, the first meeting in April, we'd wanna open bids just before that, would be my guess.
Okay.
But, like I said, I was kinda hoping to be able to give you a better idea on that at your next meeting, if I can. If I don't come to that meeting, I'll at least get you guys an email to let you know about that.
Okay.
Jake?
Yes?
Will that bid opening, um, will you need the board there? Will that be a board meeting type of meeting, or?
Uh, traditionally, I, when I've been involved in it, hasn't necessarily had to been that.
Okay.
Typically, it, you know, it's, it's advertised, hopefully, you know, it goes into your official newspaper, it's part of your official bulletin board, but, um, usually, we have the clerk attend.
Okay.
Um, for sure, and then, um, from our office, someone will attend. You know, sometimes the mayor of some communities or town supervisor likes to attend, but it's not like it's required.
Okay.
I don't believe it's required. You can ask your attorney if he has an input, but if you'd like to open them at a board meeting, that's fine. But we wouldn't recommend opening them at a board meeting and then making a decision at that same board meeting.
Right.
We always recommend a bit time to review, we review the math, make sure they didn't make math errors, anything like that. Make sure that the product, as far as this meter bid, will require that they submit, um, they'll submit product sheets on the meters that they're bidding, to absolutely make sure it's what we expected and it matches our specification. Um, all that ahead of time before you award a contract.
Okay.
And so, you know, if you wanna open them at a board meeting, that's great, but we, and if you're doing board meetings every two week, two weeks, we could have a recommendation to award ready for the, the second board meeting, you know, and then you could make your, um, make your award at that second meeting. That'd be up to you guys.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where the meter contract, now that I mentioned, there's some details, I was just, I've been working with John, trying to work out. There's a couple of commercial meters in the village, there's five of them, and we're just trying to make sure, um, you know. The, the number one overall goal of doing a meter project like this is that you get accurate metering at every connection in the system. In our case, we're, you know, the village very much trying to get an accurate understanding of how much water's being used overall by all the customers. And some of the commercial meters are pretty old. Some of them look like they're, you know, a little newer, but, um, what I was working with John is that we have to make sure we get the right size meter. Um, you know, you, just because there's a four-inch meter at, at a commercial place, doesn't mean you need another four-inch meter. First of all, a four-inch meter costs a heck of a lot more than a smaller meter. And, um, four-inch meter won't start spinning at as low of a flow rate. So, if they're just flushing toilets, it, it may not even move the meter much. It's certainly not accurately meter it if it's a four-inch meter, whereas, um, they might only need a two-inch meter or a one-and-a-half inch meter. And if they have, but if a commercial user is at any point during the month, maybe once a month, they do some process where they're running a great big hose or something, you know, filling with that, and in fact, or those types of things, then you need a bigger meter, 'cause you can't, you know, it'll restrict them, they'll get too much pressure drop, and they won't be able to get the flow they need to do their, their processes. So, we're just, I'm just working with John to make sure, we, we don't wanna necessarily do a direct replacement through meter size for those type of commercial meters, but, you know, it, it might come to that, but I'm gonna, I've gotta be able to in the bid say how many of each size meter we need to, and if we can't get it nailed down beforehand, we could, um, we can list line items for several different sizes and say, you know, two of each, and then you don't actually have to buy, when you, when you do a unit price contract like this, you know, we'll say, there's four hundred and fif- you know, give us a price per meter for four hundred and fifty meters, but then if we need to buy four hundred and fifty-five, or if we need to buy four hundred and forty-five, you will buy as many as you actually need when you go to install them. And so, we could list some extra line items and work it out later. It's not as clean, and it can give people the ability to, to move numbers around in the bid, and then the numbers might not make too much sense. So, that's my, John, um, and then the, the last thing is the force account work in the, the springs, John, that we need to, you know, if the village is planning going forward with that, what the funding agency says, we need to have a letter from, um, the village that, and the DPW department and, and the mayor, um, sign it that says that they intend to do the work by force account labor, and that, um, they have the, the technical capability of doing it. And so, um, I'd like to, you know, in the next month, I should get, um, language together for a letter for you guys.
Okay.
And you guys can review it and sign it and get that over to the funding agency. Like I said, I haven't been pushing as hard on that work, because that's later in the summer when it dries out, the meters are more important right now.
Right.
But we need to get that letter over to the funding agency. Um, they've already, we've already talked to them about you guys doing force account, but they just need that formal letter. I can tell them that that's how we're gonna do that. And you would, uh, just have to bid out or file procurement policies for any materials you need. That's everything I had on my list. Is there any questions, board? Not gonna bore you too much?
Probably slide out the Chester Johnson tomorrow to see. Yeah, I think that's a beautiful meter, and I don't, I'll leave you all that much water to, you know.
Okay, well, either, either you guys can talk to plant managers, or I can give people calls, but, um, the biggest thing is, is understanding essentially the fixtures, what we call the fixtures they have. Are they just using bathrooms? Do they have any, anything that's hooked up to a larger line? And certainly, things like, do they have sprinkler system that's going through that meter?
Uh, so I gotta check, I know Seder sticks, there's sprinklers completely separated from where they goes to the meter.
It's a separate fire line?
Yeah. Yeah, and um pretty much it's bathrooms on there.
Process water, but it's, it's just a mess, so.
Um like, composite panel solutions, pretty much just bathrooms.
Hey, so yeah, what type of usage they have, and then also a good question to ask is, um do they have anything that's sensitive to pressure in their system? Like do they have any machines that require a very consistent pressure or something like that, cause meters don't affect.
Biggest thing of concern with Chester's is when they started building their coils and they started filling coils and all.
Mm-hmm, right, so they might need a big, they might need the meter the size they have, yeah, the, I'm sure the school needs the size meter they have, um, cause it's.
From the plumbing and stuff down at the school, it's probably a separate equipment meter.
Yeah, I think that they, they probably need a four-inch meter, but um the other composite panel solutions, center sticks, the school, um. The camp down near the.
That's too much shit.
All right, but that one, and then there is one of, only one other commercial user. Yeah, Chester Johnson.
Yeah.
So. So I, I'll get in touch with you, John.
Yeah.
Did you say you went, you had?
Sometime tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll run down and see how it works.
Okay, yeah, if you need to talk to me, I'll be in town. Just before lunch.
Okay.
Call first thing in the morning, I can, I can try to meet you if I want to. Any other questions for you, Greg?
Don't believe so, thank you for staying on top of all of that and always being in communication with Mary, she's awesome too.
Yeah, Mary's, um she's great and, and she's able to, she's able to explain, get a letter from them that says, get us all this stuff that's.
Anything else, right?
Two weeks, um but she works with them a daily basis, so I guess it's the analyst that, that wrote the letters, so.
Jumped the gun?
Might have jumped the gun, but we'll, we'll find out, we'll be working with them.
Right.
Let you know if you make them go.
Okay. Guess we'll see you next.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be in touch, the, it's, your board meeting's what, the, the second and fourth?
Fourth, yeah.
Um Mondays.
So the next one's the twenty-second. Two weeks, buddy.
Yep.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Take care, Jake, thank you as always. Appreciate it, sir.
Really appreciate it.
All right. That concludes the public comment, let's go on to Gene.
Okay, um members, to pay this evening vouchers, we need to transfer some money from savings to checking. Twenty thousand from general, saving to general checking. That's the first thing I need, motion.
Do I have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, care to approve?
Uh after the last budget meeting, there was some talk about village tax, so I sent you all an email showing the two carousels. That we pay tax on?
Yes.
Okay, um I've been on your back, my advice, I'm assuming you all got it. Okay, uh just to let you know that in this current budget, we're under budgeted for our workers' comp by two thousand three hundred sixty-five and change. So that will be, we'll have to be making some transfers to cover those shortages.
Do you need to do that now?
No, that's fine. Secondly, or also, I left for you this evening, um some work papers on the property tax cap. Showing what you're going to be allowed to charging taxes. This has not been filed with the state, it's just tentative. The one question, if you see at the bottom, uh that I have to answer is, do you plan on overriding the cap?
There's email.
Okay. Okay, um I sent an email off Friday, I didn't hear back from anybody, I'm assuming you're not working on budget this evening. Okay, so definitely working on it at the next work session.
Yep.
Depending what comes about, you may have to schedule another day in there to work on budget.
Okay.
Because we need tax rate by twentieth of March. And you're not, I doubt you're gonna be working at, at your regular meeting in March. So you may have to schedule another tentative workday. John, do you have any figures that I can put into the budget?
Everything, I've been on the phone for, since Thursday, Friday, in, in between times trying to get things out, um as far as anything in the streets. Everything on the, the coming bid for a stone, I think is set, it's like blacktop, I'm waiting on prices there, I'm supposed to, supposedly it's supposed to be done tomorrow. I'll know more about that, I'm waiting on stuff and water. A few other items and so.
Well, if you can give me any figures.
So, since, I'm hoping by the end of the week, I'll have something more solid.
Um I think that's everything I had, I was wondering if you had any questions?
I don't, does anybody else? Is it, is it true?
There's no timer.
That's a forty-five gene.
I see that.
We're getting better.
Well, is there anything on the agenda that you, what likely to stay for and?
John, are you gonna need Gene for anything?
Nope.
Now, did you need to talk about that truck?
Yes, I can get a USA D loan, US, USDA loan, low interest, possibly some grant money towards a new plow truck. If I can get, you know, get it filled out and get the guy up here and hip him up, basically I get the, the information from Gene and. Well, we could send the application in, if we're approved, he'll come up, he'll fill out all the stuff and go through it. No funds to have transfer money, it's just to see what's out there for us.
Do you know how much he's talking in regards to grant money, in regards to?
That we don't know until he goes through his old, when I've read the email, when I can see, we've got to apply and he'll come back and say, this is what I think.
Does he have a general idea what we're looking at?
No. That much I can tell you, there's no, I have no idea.
We're not committing by giving a.
No, just come out and you fill out the application and he, you know, they can, they'll turn around and tell you what you want. And what they can do for you, if you don't want it, you're open, you're done.
Well, man, obviously why not, then we bring in a little possible grant money out of it and see what it could be. And then we can review if that's a route we wanna go or not. Doesn't hurt the money.
Doesn't matter either way which we decide for trucking, once, I'm hoping that tomorrow I'll have more information, again. People are sick, they've probably seen my telephone number run, but.
Oh.
I'm writing down more information.
So.
I have more stuff set in concrete, hopefully here, I'm hoping, I was hoping by today I'll get more, but.
So what all do you need from the board than just authorization for Gene to fill out the application?
There's like, was there four or five lines?
I hope, John, I wasn't gonna do anything until you guys go ahead and say, because I mean, it's gonna affect your budget possibly. If you, if, if not on grant, you have the fines, you know, it's gonna affect your budget, and I know you said before you didn't wanna go over.
Yeah, what are we going to?
I don't wanna go over it, this is the thing, I'm, you know, it's worth a shot, see what we can get.
So whatever you guys wanna do.
You don't need a motion for that, do you?
Nope, just you wanna engage, say go ahead with the paperwork for that.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
That's a good idea.
See what's out there? Um. I don't see anything under force funds that falls under for Gene. I don't, I don't foresee anything.
Do you need him for FEMA funds? Or business?
That's for what the, to.
I don't know, you told me.
Well, that's for John to um fill out the paperwork, to submit, to submit back for um the FEMA funds so that we don't have to pay them back. Like they gotta take pictures and cement all that lovely stuff for, for great, for the.
Okay, then do you need him for sewer benefit?
If you decide you're going to do that, you'll have to let me know so I can figure it into the budget, okay? Because I know you're talking forty and twenty and.
Right.
So I'll just need to know that I can figure it into the revenue side, which you decided to do.
Okay. That's something that we'll discuss later, but I don't, I don't believe that we need you for anything further, sir.
All right.
We got you out of here pretty, pretty quick, even before your break.
We call your wife and tell her you're coming.
Ah, she's not home. She go over to high school. You get to enjoy the whole night, huh?
Yeah.
How about that? All right, uh John, you're up. Here you are.
Yes, well, you know, I've been to phone through stuff and get stuff out for budget. You know, it's, you know, all standard, it's your business. Um. Teesworth's is done today, looked for a baghoe, looked for a plow truck, he's supposed to be back to me tomorrow with prices, so there again, we'll see. Biggest problem I'm having, um for retired baccals, they're getting a non-user commodity, I guess is what you wanna say?
Okay.
Everybody seems to be going to excavators and, you know, my biggest problem is if I go to an excavator, I'm stuck to a trailer, I gotta move the trailer all the time. Um now I don't have nothing to look a truck with, the trailer, the machines, the job, and you know, to where it's. What it boils down to is, it's just turning over an excavator is more logical in the long run, from what I can see, what I've been reading, what I've been understanding, what I've been checking up on. It's just not user-friendly for us. There again, I started looking at all the prices and looking, dragging the figure and I get, I'll get ahold of you tomorrow, I'll get you ahold of you first thing in the morning. Tomorrow I'll start calling people and I will try to get some better figures, but still. I haven't, until I hear back to Teesworth, I'm not gonna know exactly what's here, any good new issues.
Okay.
That's where I'm at on that.
All right.
One other thing, uh let's see, last. Once the guys went to the media rally, I was off to sign another, uh, net two meters, very impressive, I must say. Good outfit that, you know, the salesman was down today, went back over everything, they're, they're very impressive, uh very good track record, David, you know, and that was good to hear. But anyways, I got a call from sheriff's department, they needed me down on the south Franklin gentleman on top of the drag rail. Coming on the corner, moving along the drag rail, they wanted estimate on, you know, hardly how much to fix it. So I, I threw an estimate out there and um the guy got out, the truck got him out of there and I went down there, gaged it off. And proceeded to try to figure out, you know, what I'm gonna do to fix it, because that old cable system is like, you know, hanging out pieces and parts that are all long gone, everything, so. Paid a few phone calls here and there, sent down Tom to double check my measurements, computed measurements, see how much I had to replace and get fixed. As he pulls up down to the gentleman, it proceeded to Jared Donald was down there with a shovel and his truck trying to fix it and put it all back in place. I already blamed him for thirty minutes over it. He, you know, feels it is a responsibility to put it back, and I said, you can't do this, first of all, you're working on a blind hole, there are four ways on it, I said, it's not your job when you left your responsibility and here. You know, it's my responsibility and um. Got quite a bit of an argument. But he finally, so if there's any rebuttal, please let me know.
Okay.
What about Jefferson?
Uh, okay.
Okay.
What was that? What?
Nothing more?
Nothing more.
Anything new on that uh situation up on Long North?
Jay?
Yes, there was some interesting development there.
Yes.
Do you wanna start with the part where you were speaking with the police officer?
Got all the police officer, he went up to investigate. He went up to me, asked her, you know, sort of what was going on, and she said National Grid was the one that cut the wires, the breaker and plugged it back together. I took this information, I called National Grid and I, of course, I can only divulge so much information. So we know all of us, and so I'm sorry that we cannot divulge, you know, yes, we were there prior to November and we were back when we called them. And I asked the guy, I said, well, they claimed you did the work, and the guy had said, I cannot tell you what we did, I can't. That's gotta be, it's information, it's gotta go through the jan command, you gotta talk to a person, and it's gotta be, you know, somebody besides me talking to them. And I said, the only thing I did ask him before I asked, I got off the phone, I said, well, the meal, meter was not sealed when I got there. And we discovered this problem, and I said, when you guys finish your job, the meter is always sealed, it's just this. So somewhere's lying, somebody's lying, somebody pulled that meter out and got, and I, you know, National Grid would not leave the meter unsealed, so I called Jay and said, see what you can find out, because they, they won't tell me.
I called National Grid's legal department and I've been in touch with two different people there, they're investigating their records and I'm the understanding that they're going to give us a complete accounting of anything that actually was done at the address last fall. And if their records disagree with what the, what the resident said, then I, I would strongly recommend that we continue pursuing the resident for paying for the damages that it seems they caused.
Okay.
I'll let the board know when I do have that information from National Grid, but I have been in touch with them and they have been in touch back with me, we are in communication.
Anything else, no?
No. Thank you for reminding me of that, it's. I'll fax a figure full on ahead, that's why I'm putting back work for the moment.
Does anybody have anything for John?
Do you, uh, what do you think of that um shared service, that email that we got? Are you uh interested or not?
Yeah, sure, why not?
With state?
Definitely. Definitely. There are things in my phone, I can get it, you know, it's on the computer shop, I can get it down, get it printed and I can get it signed and get it sent back to whoever needs to go back to. On board, yeah, why not?
Cool.
Most definitely.
Do we need to? Make a motion to accept that or to pursue it, or what do we do?
If you're entering to agreement to share something with another municipality, you should have a resolution if you choose to adopt it. Though I'll note that nobody on the board forwarded me that agreement, if you want me to review it to make sure that it covers the village's butt.
From the DOT, from the state.
Oh, okay.
It's got uh their generic.
It's for emergency service.
Rose just handed me a copy.
My understanding is just for emergency services, so if there was a storm or anything like, what just happened, that's what. That would be in regards to. Not just like the typical shared services and, from my understanding. So after Jay's done reviewing it, we can come back and vote on it then?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Stang vote, he's like, that worked for him, so I ain't touching on him.
Okay.
That could've been.
I plead the fifth.
Okay, all right, John. Uh do you guys have anything on the youth council?
No.
Bruce?
Uh Maria Stang stopped by today and um wants to connect with um. Uh, Maria Stang stopped by today and, um, wants to connect with, um, some of the townships to talk about having, um, point, drop-off points, rather than going door-to-door, is what happened last year. Um, when they tried to change the route, there was a lot of complaints, and she said they were driving all over the place, going door-to-door, because she had parents yelling at her. Um, they would like to do, um, we're gonna talk to New Albion about doing the highway barn, and, uh, a Wesleyan church on Forty Second Street. Um, she's gonna contact them about turning around and maybe loading in their parking lot. And then she's gonna be talking to Otto regarding the fire department and the highway barns, she says they do some moving around of equipment, she doesn't want, um, to be in the way. So she's gonna talk to Ron Wosman about that, and then the regular stops in the village. Um, and she said by doing that, we should see a, a reduction in the fuel cost, because we won't be driving all over the countryside. Um. So. She's gonna be contacting, I'm gonna talk to, to Lloyd and, um, Dave about New Albion, and she's gonna contact Ron Wosman about Otto.
That makes sense.
That's where we're at right now.
Okay.
Did anybody reach out to East Auto to see if they would consider hitting back and vote?
I haven't, no.
I haven't.
Who was the person over there that?
Would be Jim Beach, is the supervisor.
They've already done their budget, though. Unless they already allocated something, they probably wouldn't imagine getting into it now.
That wouldn't be until next year's program.
Right.
Or when they do their budget. Anything else on youth council?
Can I just ask for clarification on something real quick? Did they, who made the decision to go door-to-door picking up kids this year? It's not the way it's done in the past, as far as I know.
Yeah, well, because we'd already discussed them already having a, you know, one spot to be picked up anyway, prior to Maria coming in, so.
I guess, I, all I'm saying is if, if our, if our, if our costs for
Right.
for the bus driver as well as fuel went through the roof, because they decided to go to door-to-door.
I talked to Maria back during, yeah, it was during the summer swim program this past summer. And she was concerned because, um, Stacy would send her an address and a name to pick up the child that they're gonna be attending. And there's nobody there. So I don't know if this came from Stacy, or I, I guess we're gonna have to get clarification from Maria.
You know, if I'm in line next year, they, they need that to get through.
They were supposed to this year.
Yeah, but it's not Stacy, it's not Stacy, it's not a bus driver, you know. We're gonna go door-to-door.
I know Maria wants to make sure that, that the drop-off points are part of the advertisement, so the parents know upfront and nothing gets changed. Um, so that's why she's been in contact, she's stopped in this morning to talk to me. And I believe she's gonna connect with the board as well.
Okay. Good.
I bet that's where all of our field comes from this year.
Or like that, that makes sense. Such a spike when they have so far to go.
What the part can do is, that, that doesn't really confuse me, but I'm quite not figured out. I know they all used to, you know, they gather, a lot of them used to gather at the intersections and stuff.
Right.
Here and there, but if the bus comes down South Street, and you get him, picks up a group here, and goes the other end of South Street, picks up a group. Again, I don't feel, I don't agree with the house-to-house, that's not right, it's always been groups.
All right.
But it's still traveling down South Street, if it stops twice, it stops ten times, it's still the same amount of fuel. I just can't figure out where they're coming out of all the fuel usage. And fuel prices drop?
It's out in the towns, like. Out in the countryside, you're driving around.
Yep.
And like I said, when they get a name and an address, and nobody's out there, it was a wasted trip, they try and contact the person that gave them such addresses and whatnot, and they can't get hold of them. So, I don't know. Which I didn't realize that they only had one spot, I mean, I said, I know East Auto only had one spot, they picked.
So it was always picked up at the town hall.
But I live like in Otto.
Sixty years.
Right, but in North Auto, and I've been hearing, I heard from the bus driver, that, you know, for years they've been going out and picking kids up at their houses. Because I know the one guy threw, you know, a little casket, when she said that we were talking about not doing it, it's like, well. You know, it's, it's not up to that, I said, if your kid lives on the other end of North Auto, and you want him to just pay, well, you know, you're gonna have to get him to the town auto. I said, no, we can't.
What?
What?
I'm just guessing.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were in, but, all right, so, moving along, uh, police department, um, in the crossing guard, who, one did retire from the crossing guard, right, Rose?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Malin, um, resigned. Um, so we're down to one substitute, uh, Janelle Griffin. Um, so I don't, I don't know if the board wants to advertise again, or post, or if we wanted to stick with the one. Um. She hasn't worked in a couple of years, her work schedule has been, last I checked with her, she wanted to stay as a substitute.
Is she still?
I don't know, I haven't checked with her recently, I mean, it's been at least a year since I've talked to her, so.
Okay. Could you reach out to her and see if she still wants to?
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause if she's, if she can't, then yes, we'll need to post for that.
Okay.
And then, as far as the police department, I did receive a letter of resignation from, uh, Officer Yancek. He has a great opportunity at another municipality, uh, for full-time. So, in regards to Mr. Yancek, I believe it's towards the end of the month is when he will be finishing up. Not sure as far as when the actual date will be. Uh, so, when that happens, more than likely, because I mean, we still have, um, Officer McCarth- uh, McCarthy is still our OIC. So probably Dan will be the interim OIC, and then we'll need to hire for another part-time officer.
How many do we have now?
Four.
Do we need five? Or do we need four?
We have four, including Mr. Yancek.
Right.
Okay, so do we need five?
Need a hell of a, in regards to covering shifts, or when others take time off, and vacation time and all of that.
If they're part-times, you're also gonna wanna be very careful about, it's, it's a little costly to keep extra people on the books, but they can't do over twenty hours a week multiplied out by fifty-two weeks a year, or else the civil service commissioner will come in and slap you down.
Right.
Dean, I'll need the letter of resignation for Jim, because I have to send that into civil service.
Yeah. Yeah. Hello. So, the next meeting, we have that confirmed, that it is official, he turned it in, um, pre-existing in regards to it, and he said, well, if it goes through, then, you know, then, of course, we accept the resignation, if not, then well, of course, we're glad to have you, because he's done a good job as our interim OIC. Um, anything on senior citizens? Oh, I think it's something with senior citizens, from Let's Travel Club, um, they sent us a thank you card, um, it wrote, uh, thank you mayor and board members for the improvements made to the senior center building. We met there again for the first time last night and enjoyed the new, uh, paint job, flooring, and stove. It seems a lot roomier in there now. Thanks again, Dorothy Harvey, Secretary Anne, on behalf of the members of the Cataragons of Let's Travel Club. So that's nice. So I wanted to share that. Um, has anybody talked with anybody else in regards to Let's Travel Club or senior citizens?
No, I'm still waiting to see, uh, on the dinner. I've heard a thing back on the dinner, they wanna do, do the open house with the senator.
Right.
That's what I thought I heard.
Okay. Um. Did we get anything bought from, uh, Brady's by chance for?
The renewal, no.
No.
I just wrote myself a note to check with Hannah on the renewal insurance for, uh, the budget work meeting.
Okay. Uh, ambulance?
I didn't remember anything happened.
Library?
Um, they were closed last week for renovations. Opened back up today, they got new carpet put in. Yeah, it's, carpet's been there for like thirty-seven years. They got their carpet, um, Ed that was in here, the president, um, donated some time, built a new, uh, hub, I guess you call it, but that's.